I will call to order this meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission. The date is March 22, 2021. First, a reminder to commissioners, applicants, and callers to please mute yourself if you're not speaking, even if you're on the phone, and try to remember to unmute as well, which is hard to remember. All right, next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes of the planning commission's last regular meeting, which was on February 22, 2021. Do we have a motion in a second? You can go ahead.
Second.
All right, I think Commissioner Sturza moves and Commissioner Rosenberg seconds. Is that right? Okay. And remember to say your names, if you would, because then I don't have to remember. All right, any discussion about the February 22 minutes? Seeing no discussion, Nellie, staff, would you take roll call, please, on the approval of the minutes?
Yes, I will, thank you. Chair Kwam?
Hi.
Commissioner Keneely? Not present? Commissioner Lavin?
Hi.
Good, hi, Commissioner Keneely. Commissioner Lavin?
Hi.
Commissioner Penn?
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph? Not present, and Commissioner Sturza?
Hi.
And that is six eyes and the motion passes.
Thank you. And now, out of order, Nellie, would you also take roll call for us? I missed that.
Oh, yes. Chair Kwam?
Here.
Commissioner Keneely?
Here.
Commissioner Lavin?
Hi, sorry.
Commissioner Penn?
Here.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Rudolph? Not present, and Commissioner Sturza?
Here.
And six present, Commissioner Rudolph is absent.
Thank you. I just got a message from Commissioner Rudolph that his link isn't working. Possible for anyone to, I don't know, reach out to him with a, I don't know what can be done, but he's trying to get in.
I can try and resend.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is our open forum, and I will tell the public what that is about. The number to call into our open forums live is 612-861-0651. Open forums is an opportunity at each meeting for residents to call in to address the planning commission on items not on the agenda. People can go to Richfield's Planning Commission webpage and then select agendas and minutes. On that page, you will find instructions on how to participate in open forum, either through email, voicemail, or by calling in live right now. Melissa, did we receive our staff? Did we receive any comments prior to tonight's meeting for open forum?
We did not receive any comments prior to the meeting, but there is one caller on the line.
Wonderful, and I'm going to repeat the number for anyone who's considering calling in, 612-861-0651. Caller, callers, I have some instructions for you. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments. This will be your statement rather than a question and answer format. Please mute any device you are currently watching the meeting on, or we'll get too much feedback that we won't hear you. You should start by clearly stating your name and address, then begin your comments. The chair will interrupt if you are nearing three minutes, or if we cannot hear you clearly. And we are happy you're here, so go ahead and with your name and your comments. Caller. Actually, I don't see a caller on our, in our cubes here. All right, okay, so that person was, I thought that might happen, that that person was calling for the public hearing, and we'll call back. So the moderator just told them to call back, so that is the same number for the public hearing, by the way. So we have no callers for the, the open forum. So next, we move to approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Would a commissioner?
Chair Kwam, I just saw a message that there might be a call coming in.
Thank you. I should have waited a bit.
Chair Kwam, while we're waiting, I'm having trouble with my email and I am unable to forward this to Commissioner Rudolph. If he has the invitation, he could also call in via that number and join the meeting, just without a camera, or if someone else was able to forward it.
Could one of the other commissioners try emailing the link again to Commissioner Rudolph?
I can do that right now.
Thank you. All right, do we have our caller yet?
We'll wait another minute.
612-861-0651. Okay, I was just informed that was a mistake, so I think we're going to move on. Thank you for trying to get us some callers. The open forum is closed now, and next we have, okay, it was another one for the public hearing. So next is approval of agenda of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Someone move in second? Commissioner, Chair Kwam moves. Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the tonight's agenda from commissioners? Nellie?
Can I get clarification on who seconded that?
Peter Lavin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nellie. Any discussion on approving tonight's agenda? See, no discussion. Nellie, would you take roll call?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam?
Hi.
Commissioner Keneely?
Hi.
Commissioner Lavin?
Hi.
Commissioner Penn?
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Hi.
Commissioner Sturza?
Hi.
All eyes, the eyes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on now. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one is a public hearing and consideration of a recommendation on a variety of land use approvals to construct a mixed-use development at the northeast corner of Lindale Avenue and 65th Street. Notice of this hearing was mailed to properties within 500 feet of the proposed development and published in the Sun Current newspaper. And people can call in live during this public hearing, same number that I have been reading. And I think the applicants, I see Neil Reardon, and at least one of the applicants from the development project is here, Neil Reardon is with ESG Architecture and Design. Is someone here also from Enclave Development?
Yes.
Oh, there you are, Ryan B. Thanks, glad you're here.
Thanks.
So they'll be here for our questions. Next is an overview of the sequence of our two public hearings tonight, so nobody is wondering when they'll have an opportunity to speak or ask questions. So first, the chair will read an introductory statement about the type of land use. Next, we will have the staff report. Next, the applicants can share anything they feel the report didn't touch on. Commissioners then ask questions of staff for the applicant. Then we open it up for the public hearing for callers or people that have called in previously to staff. That number 612-861-0651. Then we close the public hearing, staff answers callers' questions, applicants make final comments if they choose to, and then the commissioner discusses, discuss the issues presented or ask remaining questions. Finally, there are motion or motions, or amendments to motions are made. Final discussion between commissioners, and then the votes are taken. Sorry, that was a mouthful. So, let's see. Oh, we have Commissioner Rudolph here. Okay, thank you. So we could note that in our attendance. Everyone is.
Technical difficulties, Chair Kwam.
No problem, that happens. So seven commissioners are here. All right. Okay, so introductory statements. The key item for our public hearing tonight involves a planned unit development, also called a PUD, and it includes a rezoning. In considering a planned unit development, or PUD, the commission is evaluating the development plans based on both the underlying guiding zoning district and criteria specific to a PUD. A PUD should encourage the efficient use of land and resources and encourage innovation in planning and building. The planning commission is limited to consideration of the city's comprehensive plan and zoning code when considering a PUD. All PUD applications are reviewed by Richfield's Administrative Review Committee, or ARC, before coming before the planning commission. Then the planning commission conducts a public hearing and makes a recommendation to the city council. Staff, would you please read your report?
Thank you, Chair Kwam, members of the planning commission. The requests before you tonight are related to a mixed-use building that's located at the northeast corner of Lindale Avenue and 65th Street. The proposed redevelopment would redevelop the site that is improved with a strip commercial space and a residential property. The redevelopment would include one building containing 159 residential units and approximately 8,000 square feet of commercial space. This prop, this subject area is currently zoned general commercial, C2, and it is guided by the comprehensive plan as the mixed-use category. This specific area of the community, otherwise known as the lakes at Lindale, has been programmed for a city center redevelopment for quite some time. That city center envisions this area of the city being a center for residential, commercial, and recreational uses, all synergistically working together. The proposed building, which would, as I mentioned, contain 159 residential units and 8,000 square feet of commercial space, would be five stories in height, and the massing of that building would be largely positioned towards the Lindale Avenue and 65th Street corridors, away from the residential neighborhood to the north. The proposal provides an enhanced pedestrian environment in the vicinity of the project via several walk-up units that line a podium parking structure that faces both Lindale and 65th Street, as well as a significant mass of storefront windows with the commercial use portion. The connectivity of the area is enhanced by a proposed sidewalk connection that would link 65th to 64 and a half street to the north. And this generally is a well landscaped and high-quality urban design that really meets the intent of the comprehensive vision, plan's vision for this area. This redevelopment is proposed for planned mixed-use and was examined against the standards of the mixed-use community designation. For the most part, the proposal would comply with the applicable requirements. However, there are a few exceptions noted in staff's material. However, in large part, those derivations are mediated through alternative measures. The development team held a required neighborhood meeting on March 3. The, the neighbors were afforded the opportunity to hear the plans and ask questions, and generally, the topics of conversation ranged in topics from density, parking, affordability, to fencing and screening and traffic and other impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. The staff's recommendation does include approval of both a rezoning and the planned unit development, and we are recommending that those be done by two separate motions. Again, this would be a recommendation for the council's ultimate approval. So at this point, I will pause for any questions that the commission may have, and as you mentioned, Chair Kwam, that the development team is well represented and could also speak to some of your questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Would the applicants, Mr. Bachman or Mr. Reardon care to share anything, any comments right now? Add anything?
Yes, Chair Kwam and commissioners, we would have a short, just a brief presentation here about a few changes we've worked through to let you know about. I promise to be brief, and then happy to sit for any questions, along with Brian Bachman from Enclave Properties.
Okay, could you begin by, you know, identifying yourself? Thank you.
I was, I was just going to introduce myself to you. So my name is Neil Reardon with ESG Architecture and Design. We've been hired by, by Enclave Properties, Brian Bachman, who's joining us here this evening to present this to you and work through the entitlements. Additionally, on our team is Westwood Engineering for Civil and Landscape Architecture. And then also joining me from, from my team, partner in charge of the project, Chris Wolack, and project designer, Ryan Sampson. So all, all of us are available for questions, should you have them, and I'll just share my screen here right now and show you a, again, mentioned a very quick presentation. Can you see my screen up present?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right, so following the staff report, I'll gloss over a number of the things, just highlighting here the extent of the, of the proposed project. It includes three parcels that you can highlight in red there. As Ryan has already mentioned, it's at the northeast corner here, borders three streets, west 64th and a half, as well as Lindale and 65th. There it is in a bird's eye view. Ryan already outlined this, but here's just kind of a timeline of where we're at in the process. As mentioned, the neighborhood meeting on the 3rd, we've had an initial application in the middle of February, as well as a revised application on March 8th with the ARC comments, many of the ARC comments incorporated at that time. Here we are tonight on the 22nd, and then looking towards future dates of possible council hearings. Here's just a caller's site plan that we wanted to present to you, kind of showing the building footprint of the level one of the building. As you can see there, with the dash line that I hover over right now, that is the extent of the level two above, which covers level one, but level one is an open surface plan there on circulation on the backside with, with commercial and residential parking. As, as you already noted, just noting the, the walk-ups and the, and the street connection here on the east side, the walk-ups along 65th, the walk-ups continue along part of Lindale, and then there's the main entry to the residential part of the building here, as well as in the rear there, and then a commercial space of roughly between 7,000 and 8,000 square feet, with a commercial terrace here that's, that's covered where I'm pointing right now. Site access is in two ways, from the rear here at 64th and a half, as well as entry and exit from this curb cut here along Lindale. So reduction of curb cuts from present existing conditions, really consolidating those to minimal locations and planting where possible. I'll just quickly flip through some, some elevations. These were all in the packet and, and have not changed much since, since the packet that was submitted. Here's the view from 65th. Here's the view from the rear side, starting to show the, the design of that and those spaces. A view from the roundabout area, showing where the building steps back and at the corner of 65th and Lindale, as well as the pedestrian kind of environment there at the street, along with the new city buildout of those streets. A couple items I just wanted to highlight, these, these orange lines on the site plan are indicating a couple of street sections, which I'm going to flip to next here to show you just kind of some of that dimensionality and urban design context to quickly overview that. We did not include these in a previous packet, but wanted to show these to you this evening. On the very left there, you're seeing the, the street section along 65th Street. And so you can see there the stoop landscape walk-ups within the property line. We have, I'll illustrate in a moment, turned those to, to be perpendicular to the, to the trail. So then you can see the, the trail and sidewalks, as well as the landscape zone, and the trail swings through here. So this isn't the, this isn't the context throughout the entirety of that frontage, but for the, this is an example of part of that. Moving into, to the diagram in the middle, this is a diagram we wanted to show along Lindale Avenue, where, where we have the, the main entry of the building right here. And this is, this is our main, main way someone would approach the building if they're walking up to it. We also have that rear entry, which, which functions as a, I'll call it a second, secondary main entry. So you come up the steps just slightly here, but there's a nice generous setback at this portion along Lindale, as well as some drop-off parking out of the lane of traffic in the new buildout for, for Lindale Avenue. The diagram on the right is a section here at that commercial space, where you see a commercial terrace there, kind of underneath the building, that is tucked under our, our footprint of residential above. And then you can see the, the sidewalk and, and trail, and as well as the boulevard frontage along Lindale, again there with, with this being the parking zone where I'm pointing right now. So I wanted to show you those diagrams, as well as a few, just note a few changes. As I, as I mentioned just a minute ago, we did rotate these walk-up units to be perpendicular to the trail. We feel that's a, that's a better approach, not only for the, for the public right-of-way and everything happening out on the street, but also for the walk-up units themselves. It's a, it's a superior progression into those units, and we feel that it offers a little more privacy to those residents, those future residents that would, that would live in these units. Secondarily, we are exploring a property line revision in, in two areas, actually. One area we've known about for a while was, was this change right here where I'm pointing, where this, this peels back from the, the new roundabout and the new city buildout. The former property line here, you can see with that thin blue line, that's, that's the existing, if you will, property line that we're, that we know will change with the, with the roundabout. Additionally, that, that blue line comes back right here under, under current context, and we are proposing to bump that one out in this location. And that is to include these, these stoops within the property line at these two walk-up units, as well as the stairs railing and stoop of the main entry of the building. And so it's kind of a, it's kind of a flip-flop there on, on that land, leading to almost a net neutral among square feet in the new parcel. Additionally, we've been working through with, with a variety of city staff on just a, on the backside of this trail and what they'd like to see there for clearances, kind of for visual appropriateness as people swing along this trail slash sidewalk. We want, we, we peel the back, building back slightly there in the, working through comments with the city in the last few weeks, and we'll work to continue to do so in a couple areas with them as we go and revise plans going forward. And then lastly, we've, we've always sort of had a, a condition here at the east side where the sidewalk kind of directly borders our property line, and we, city staff made the comments of making sure that the privacy fence there is appropriate, and so we've made provisions there for a, like a three, three to four foot high privacy fence there that, that is really going to function nicely for the adjacent property owners, as well as for the residents of those walk-ups. It'll be more than just a screen fence, it'll, it'll have a solid nature to it, so that headlights are not shining back and forth, or, or, or it also offers a little more privacy for the, for the residents looking out to the east. And then lastly, on the backside of the property, we did make some changes. You can see a before diagram on the left and an after diagram on the right. We did revise our paving plan back here and our parking plan to just be, you know, slightly less, a little more green and slightly less pavement. You can see there where we've sort of straightened out that entry sequence, where you proceed in through this rear curb cut, and then around here to this main drop-off entry, and then you would proceed out. That being said, that's the normal progression, but it's all two-way traffic through that zone, accessing both commercial parking on the surface lot, as well as residential parking, more so over here to the east on the surface lot. We've designated a area for pet relief. We've worked and are working with the adjacent property owner to upgrade this fence, which exists right on the property line of, of the two properties as they border each other. We've decreased the impervious surface area, as I already mentioned, in those areas, and then, again, simplified that, that drive access route. A few more renderings to flip through for you here from the main entry, here from the main corner of the building, rather. This is a view along 65th, and I'll just note this, you know, the setback here at the upper levels. So levels one and two do come out to where those walk-ups are, and then there's a nice generous setback of 15 feet or so until, you know, where level three comes out, and there's some unit terraces there. A view from the west at Lindale, another view from, from the roundabout. And again, looking east down 65th Street, if you will, from the roundabout. A little bit of a bird's eye here to, to end on for us with a, that, that's what we're calling a south unit terrace, a very small space that steps out on level three. We also have a larger north terrace that steps out on the north side of, of level three. So with that, I wanted to be brief and allow time for questions. Happy to answer any that, that you may have for us on topics covered or, or others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon. Before, I'll call in Commissioner Rudolph. Oh, you already did it. I was going to ask you to take your screenshot on. All right, Commissioner, so now it's time for commissioners' questions to staff or applicant Commissioner Rudolph?
Yeah, so seeing, trying to understand, were these change, these changes weren't in our packet that you just showed us? Or I was looking for some of them, and I didn't see some of them in the packet.
Commissioner Rudolph, I would have to defer to staff. I, I'm not sure which version was distributed. We submitted an initial application on February 15th, and then a revised with many of the ARC comments on March 8th.
This is the March, March 8th submittal that, that the commission received. So they, they should be reflected in the, but you might not have seen the before condition, so that's why it might not be, you might not be identifying that.
The, the other thing was the, the three or four-foot privacy fence. I'm not sure if I really consider three or four feet privacy fence. You know, I'm, I'm trying to understand why it would be like eight, six or eight feet.
Commissioner Rudolph, happy to answer that. We felt that, that a portion of it actually will be higher along the north section that, that borders more so the single-family residential. The other portion borders a surface parking lot to the east, and we felt that that portion, that portion of the fence on the south half was a little more appropriate to be four and a half feet, kind of a mid-height thing where you can see over the top of it, one for safety, and two, just to offer a, a modicum of privacy up against that, that adjacent surface parking lot that's directly to the east of this part of the site here, which I'm highlighting. I'm sorry, I'm not sharing my screen. I can do that again.
I'm talking about the portion that was, it looks like it's bordering the residential?
Yes, the portion, that's correct. The portion that borders the single-family residential, I'll call it on the very northeast of the site, we do actually have a six-foot-high privacy fence at that location.
And Steph, what are the, what are, what are the parking ratios are we looking at? You know, I, I know that we're in the packet, just if you could refresh us.
Sure. So for the residential part at one, one and a, one and a quarter stall per dwelling unit, and they are eligible being on a transit line for a 10% reduction. So they, their, their materials identify, let me just find it one second here. Their materials identify, well, with 159 units, that requires a minimum of 179, and they altogether have 238. That's without any commercial accounting. So the packet does include a few scenarios. In all likelihood, given kind of we would, mostly retail and service-type commercial tenants. So at full capacity, commercial tenants. So at full capacity, that would maybe require another 25. So 179 plus that 25 is just over 200. And again, they have 238 basically stalls. There are a number of tandem stalls on the second level of the structured parking. Those count for, you know, the two tandem stalls together count for one and a half. So that's why there's a 238.5. So so that's what we're looking at that well well meets the minimum.
You know, I remember back when we're talking about the development over on Penn, which is, I think, about five stories. This looks like it's going to be very similar. And we also at that point did a a shade study. And you know, the the concern here is will the residential houses next to it? You know, I'll use an example of this winter, you know, my backyard, I've got I put in, you know, I had about a five foot section that it just finally this week the snow melted after I shoveled it into my yard, but will the houses in those residential areas seem see very similar things? Have we done a shade study of what we expect that to look like? And if so and if not, why not? It's a concern of mine with the height. Now, I I really like the look of things, but I'm I'm just curious on that.
The packet of materials did include a shade study. So for the most part, in the summer condition, you know, midsummer, you know, a third of the year on on either side. If you if you go to page 35 of the packet, you can see, but you know, in the summer condition, the residences to the north are would not have a shade condition during daytime hours. You know, when you get into winter, this being to the south of those residences, there would be some shade put on on those on those dwellings. But in terms of growing season, for the most part, the 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 shade study kind of shows that you would have some effects in the afternoon, but for the most part during the morning and and daytime, it would be confined to just the immediate area in terms of shade.
Mr. Penn?
I was just going to comment that Commissioner Rudolph, I think, was trying to speak and he was still muted.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize. I do see that page. Appreciate that. I must just to miss that and reading the packet.
Commissioner Commissioner Lavin and then Commissioner Caneely.
Somewhat to echo Jim's Commissioner Rudolph's concerns. My concern here is is really the the parking. As we know, this will be the the third large multi unit building constructed in this area, which puts a lot of pressure on to the neighborhood that's right adjacent to the north. And we already see that pressure coming out of the multi units that are there existing. So it's only going to be exacerbated by the ones that are being built. So I'm, you know, when we had this in a work session, I I believe, because I wrote down the 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 comment or the note that the developers prefer normally a one and a half a 1.5 parking ratio for residential just because it promotes stability and non issues with surrounding areas. And I see within the schematics and the drawings and the presentation that they are allotting for a 1.35. But I'm seeing in the recommendation from the city that they'll be allowed to go down to a 1.15, which, you know, according to what we could allow. You know, that's that's technically in our policy. But I guess maybe my question for maybe for Ryan and both for the developer, maybe Ryan first, then the developer is, did we consider the, you know, the concentration of multifamily that we have here? Sometimes it may not be prudent to to, you know, shoot for the lowest lowest parking ratio that that we could allow based on what's already there. And then two, from the resident from their from the developer's point of view. If we, you know, let's say there's 7,000 square feet and the majority of that is taken up by a large restaurant, which we require 10 spaces per thousand feet. Clearly, we don't have the surface parking lot for that. There would be bleed over into the neighborhood primarily probably on 64th and a half and and Harriet Avenue. How would we would we how do we guard against that is my concern? I mean, would we be willing to put some restrictions on what could go into that space? I'm I'm assuming from a developer developer standpoint that you don't want to do that. But I mean, I'm thinking like worst case scenario, we could have quite a bit of traffic on the surface and and I don't know if there's a loud parking in the structure. And even so, most likely people would just defer to the streets because that's the easiest. So I guess I'll I'll throw it back. Those are my concerns. I don't think 1.15 given the concentration is 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 the right level for this development. And I'm just curious how it got that low after initially hearing that it would be much higher. I'll I'll stop talking and let you let you maybe Ryan first and then the developers.
Again, that's a that is a policy that that's in the code that a reduction can be in place. Obviously, it's at the prerogative of the decision makers. And I think when we look at this development, we you know, we we looked at whether or not it meets the 1.25 from a starting place. So and and it does. The the point is of the math is showing that kind of, you know, in terms of an effect on on the on the dynamics of the the neighborhood, so to speak, that you know, we certainly would expect a lot of trips to utilize the transit system. But in all, you know, at the end of the day, we looked at it from the perspective of this need to this needed to meet the 1.25. And again, the math was just trying to show all the pieces of kind of what the ordinance required.
I'm happy to answer the second part of that question. Chair Quam, Commissioner Allen. Currently, the project is parked to a one to 1.4 ratio. So that's with with 220 stalls for 159 units, and that's just the residential numbers associated with that. So I just wanted to be clear that that's that's what we're that's where we're at right now. And that's our intention for the residential components. It's all for that answers that part of the question, but I'll take it over to Brian to answer the remaining parts of that.
Sure. No, thanks for the question. Yeah, no, the the I think I believe the 1.15 that Ryan was talking about was the minimums that we could do. That's not what we are planning. We I don't think we would plan anything that sparsely parked outside of, you know, downtown Minneapolis. So this project, what we would consider to be a a downtown project, an infill project in an area that does have a great deal of walkability. It does have mass transit available right across the street. We would say that the our project on this one would we'd be very comfortable in that 1.4 to 1.5 range. We would probably even think about going down to 1.35 in these areas. And I think that, you know, Chris and Neil can can talk about what the is kind of the norm for this first ring suburb infill dense area. What's kind of normal, but the and and to be honest with you, we usually go a little bit higher than our architects tell us that we have to. But no, I think we would be comfortable there on the retail side. It's really difficult to say what's going to be there. That was a difficult equation before COVID. Post COVID, it's I just haven't bought the right crystal ball yet. If anybody knows where I can get one, please let me know. But I I think the other thing is 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 the reality is we would have to look really seriously whether or not we could have a restaurant in this space. And if we were going to have a restaurant in this space or a coffee shop is the other example that I think Ryan has in the notes. We would have to be really, we would have to really look at what the remaining space could be. And the times of day that those things are going to be serviced and and all the rest that goes with it. Because to be perfectly honest with you, it would be do us absolutely no good to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a on a tenant allowance fit up of a restaurant, underpark them and have them closed because that's 100% what would happen. Restaurants don't work when you have, you know, when you pull into the parking lot, there's no place to park. Most people aren't going to go, I'll go park park two blocks away and walk. They go, I'll go to one of the other 500 options that I have. So no, I think as we move this forward and as we we work with our leasing team and the rest, we'll get a better feel for kind of what we're what we're looking at. The initial folks that have reached out to us have been more in the service retail type uses. We had one that would have been really fun. But there's no way we could have parked what they what they wanted to do. So we had to turn them down.
Could I follow?
Excuse me. I'm sorry. It's we're going to get pretty excited here and and I'm trying to be as fair as I can. And Commissioner Caneely has been waiting a long time and he was next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Caneely here. I wanted to make a comment about the shade study. There was a public comment that expressed concern over the shade on the sidewalks. I'm thinking particularly about Lindale Avenue and then the east side of the structure. There looks to be heavy shade throughout the winter and even into March. So I'm curious if the sidewalks will be impacted. And then I have a second question unrelated.
To go ahead.
Commissioner Caneely, I'm not sure who you were asking the question to, but in in general, yes, the sidewalks will be in shade. The city has a policy where we we organize a maintenance agreement with the developer to make sure that those sidewalks are maintained. City generally does a courtesy pass on parks and or on trails and sidewalks as well. But it would be up to the developer to make sure that those sidewalks are salted and safe. In terms of consideration on this development, you know, the zoning code does allow the buildings to come up that close to the sidewalk. They are meeting the setback requirements. So if that's something that the city is concerned about, then we should look at maybe increasing that setback. But on this particular property, it it does meet our current requirements.
I I appreciate that. Sorry, I didn't address my question. And then my my second question is, I I saw the statement in here that exiting the structure via the neighborhood will be slower and not preferred. The the document stated that it's anticipated people will exit via Lindale Avenue and enter via Lindale. And I'm curious, I'm not sure who can answer this question, but assuming that drivers will behave contrary to how we we encourage them to. I I'm worried that the neighborhood will be impacted by vehicle traffic on the on the backside.
Would you are you asking for an answer to the I assume you are.
I I'm I I would like to hear more about what what data there is to to support that assumption that people will prefer Lindale Avenue.
Commissioner Caneely, I I don't believe there was a traffic study done. The developer can answer that for certain. To go north, obviously Lindale is going to be the preferred route. It's going to be a lot faster than going through the neighborhood. I believe the transportation engineers have taken a look at this and they do think that the majority, you know, there there are of course, their assumptions. But there are reasonable assumptions that are made with any, even if there is a traffic study done with how traffic and drivers will behave. That is not to say that traffic will not exit ever onto 64th and a half street. But the the work that we have done says that the majority of the traffic will go out on Lindale Avenue. And the fact that this is, I'm sorry, just to continue, the fact that this is primarily a residential development as opposed to a commercial and the exits on the north side of the development, they're actually reducing the exit points on that side of the development is anticipated to help commercial traffic or commercial tends to generate a lot more traffic than residential development does.
Thank you.
Who's next? Commissioner Rudolph, and then I'd like to share.
Do we know if the developer plans in some of those shaded areas, you know, might be able to mitigate with the sidewalk issues and the shading? Plans to put in like maybe heated sidewalks like they do downtown in most of these developments where you have, you know, a ton of issues with the possible slipping on a sidewalk and falling when it's icy.
Commissioner Rudolph, I don't know if that's been discussed. Perhaps Brian has had those discussions, but in general, this will be public sidewalk. And my understanding is that we don't generally heat public sidewalks. It's something that we can bring up with our engineers though.
And yeah, quickly, a quick answer. No, we had not anticipated doing that. We haven't had problems with that in the past. We have 24 hour maintenance people at our at our facility. And we have staff on on staff 24 hours a day as well. So this will be something that'll be pretty easy for us to keep an eye on and maintain.
Commissioner Sturza and then Chair Quam and then Commissioner Penn.
I have a question slash comment for city staff. I'm just given that this is Lindale and that we know that this is a and we're hoping for this to be more pedestrian bike friendly area. The plans look like there is not much of a bike trail allocation, bike path allocation around the roundabout. And I'm wondering what caused that what's causing that that narrow space for bikes in the roundabout? And if there's any way we can mitigate that, I don't know if that is within the scope of this or within, but that is a concern of mine is the bike lane in the roundabout area that looks quite narrow.
Are you raising your hand?
I was, but you go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, no, the the and city engineer team has been working with the project engineer on, you know, ultimate layout of the the roundabout because, you know, they're both kind of going on at close to the same time. So, you know, city's still developing plans. And, you know, this project is coming together. So they've been working you know, going back and forth with designs and this is kind of the result of that conversation. You know, it's kind of a technical matter that we leave up to the the engineers expertise. So you know, this is public way that that's really the domain of the public works and engineering teams.
Just just to clarify, thank you. Are we so for and I'm a relatively new commissioner, so apologies for my ignorance on this. But how are and I can I can direct this to city engineer at a different time too. But how do we think of roundabouts and bike lanes? And how do we is there a way that we typically allocate space for bikes in that space? Because it looks to me and correct me if I'm reading this wrong, that kind of the bike space disappears for the roundabout on that corner and then reappears after the roundabout. Is that what we do for bike lanes in Richfield around roundabouts? Again, apologies if this is belaboring a point.
Commissioner Sturza, yes, for for recreational bikers, we do transition the bike lane into the trail lane or pedestrian lane to go through the roundabout. Commuter bicyclists will feel safe enough and they will they will ride with traffic through those lanes. But we generally guide the less experienced bicyclist onto the trail for those sections. In terms of your question about the width, I did specifically send just an extra comment to our engineers today to make sure that they are taking close look at the width of the trail at that pinch point.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
This is Chair Quam. Um, first of all, I, I wanna say that I really like the look of the design and I appreciate that. It, I like the step back of the upper levels. I think that's such an improvement to a lot of the more boxy look that it looks a little more imposing and um, it's an attractive de- design. Um, one thing, this is directed generally at for staff reports or for future developments is I wish we could get some views where it shows compared to say the north side homes, how does this look in pers- um, in proportion? We see the City Bella aerial view which kind of dwarfs the, the project, uh, the building and makes it, it looks good, but I'd like to see it. So it's not a surprise when it goes up just how it looks in proportion to the houses around it. So something like a three D model or something just down on the ground from that side. Um, then my, my concerns are, and wondering what can be done about them at this point are the um, for the mixed use district, so meeting the mistu- mixed use district um criteria of uh, the, so in this project, the proposed impervious area totals ninety-five point three percent of the development site, exceeding the eighty percent maximum. That's quite a chunk more in my opinion. And I read the rationale that there's some green space up elevated for, for um tenants of that building and that um, that, let's see, the intent of this requirement uh, is to provide areas for open space for recreation and stormwater management. Um, the proposed development plant, plans include a third floor amenity plaza. Well, that's only available to the people that live there, not to Richfield residents and um, but I'm mainly worried about the stormwater. It says below grade stormwater management facilities are proposed to handle increased drainage associated with the added hard surfaces. Um, so we got a building area that's gonna go seventy-six percent of the building site, exceeding the fifty percent maximum for mixed use. That's a big chunk more. And also the increase in previous space. How can we reduce those at this point? Is there any other option? Um, I'm asking. Otherwise, this is all kind of futile to talk about, but, and also the underground water, stormwater management proposed, does that mean it's gonna happen? I'm not sure by the word proposed. And this is addressed to the um, the builder, to the developer or the engineer. Thank you.
Chair Quam, thank you for the question. Um, I can address the, the first component of the stormwater very much is a part of the project. Um, when it said it's proposed, it's proposed along with everything else in the project. So I just want to be clear that, that that is um, a component we are doing. It is, it is underground underneath the uh, surface parking. I wanna, I'm gonna call it the northeast corner of the site. That's the location of the underground stormwater system. Um, pertaining to your other questions, uh, Mr. Blackman, do you wanna handle those?
Yeah, no, the um, the stormwater will be handled on site. Um, the um, the, it's a great deal of the other stuff like the, the plaza work and things that we're doing with that. Those obviously, like as you said, will be um specifically for um, our residents, but um I think that um, part of what we tried to do in the back was to try to give us a little bit of green area so that we can have some areas in the back. There's, there is not a lot of space to be sure. Um, but I think when you look at what the project was prior, you know, basically all you had was um, you know, the uh, multi-tenant uh, building and parking lot. So this one, basically you're still getting a multi-tenant building and a parking lot. Um, it's uh, with the downtown usages here, um, it really kind of ends up being um what we needed to be as far as um, parking and density and setbacks.
And then Chair Quam, just to supplement uh, Brian's comments there and more completely as, answer your question. Yes, uh, we are over on the lot coverage and the impervious. Um, however, I, what, what we found in projects like these that are urban and build out to the, to the, and what's called for in the mixed use district is to build out to those, those property lines. We do generally, um, many times in these projects exceed uh, the lot coverage as well as the impervious in these cases in order to deliver a project like this that, that has the levels of densities, has the the urban feel, if you will, um, or a- and, and we always do the, the other components well, uh, that is, you know, the, the urbans, do the urban spaces really well in lieu of, of being able to offer what, what some consider adequate or ample greenery. So hopefully that answers uh, your question more completely.
Yeah, and then just.
And to throw one, and I, let me throw one more thing in there for you. The uh, the other thing that we did do, um, when we kind of redesigned the building, originally we had underground parking and apart, and, and then main, and then uh, a little bit on the main floor. What we ended up doing to try to get us some more, some additional parking and more importantly, additional covered parking was to bring the entire property, the entire building up out of the ground so that now we have main floor parking and our second floor is our parking level. And that did allow us to get more parking places with less um, and allowed us to do, to do, do a couple of things on that, on the, in the surface lot to give us a little bit more green space.
So your parking level is now above ground when it was under before?
Correct. We have our, a main floor parking and the second floor of the building is parking as opposed to the underground level and the main floor. So we just basically brought the whole building up a floor.
Okay, um, and then this, this is my last part of that is those both affect the um, required trees component, which is, is, is important to a lot of people now. We're trying, some people are trying to work on a um, tree preservation policy in Richfield. And this project is going from the mixed use required thirty-six trees down to half of that eighteen. Because otherwise it would look overcrowded. Um, so they all tie together, but um, it's, it concerns me that, you know, those things all together. Um, I understand trying that the urban aspect, but we have to keep our community forest healthy and work with it. So they all kind of go together and I'll, I'll pass to Commissioner Penn.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Just writing down a note real quick. There's in your comments, Commissioner Quam. So I think uh, you know, just I, I want to keep a couple of things in mind, you know, as planning commissioners too, you know, a lot of this stuff on shade studies and the stormwater and things like that, you know, are, you know, that they do get vetted heavily by staff and, you know, I, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the shade in general as it pertain to, um, you know, I'm, I'm the beneficiary of a development right across the street from my house as well, and it's a five-story development. And shade was a big issue for that. And I think um, you know, looking at the context for this site, as far as sidewalk safety, you know, fortunately, the faces that matter most to, you know, general public walkthrough traffic and things like that are on the south and the west side, which are fortunately your most hot sides. And so I, I feel safer about that. Um, and so I, you know, I, I have a ton of concerns about icing, you know, I, I was looking at the shade study and how it affected things in the winter and looking at how this building now affects my home in the winter and trying to relate the two to each other. And um, and it's, you know, we have to balance what the long term of this property is gonna be as well as what the short term needs are for all the neighbors as well. Because, you know, I, I looked at, you know, that some, a couple of the backyards, we're gonna get some shade in peak, you know, winter solstice, which is gonna happen with any tall building. It's happening where I am. Um, building heights help that, pushing the building towards the road help that. Um, so I felt, I felt comfortable with what they're able to achieve there. Um, you know, I, and, and, you know, and I started to think about the long term on this site as well and how the um, how all the other lots are, you know, they are proposed for, you know, mixed use, higher density, um, and that they are gonna be a different building alignment arrangement. Um, you know, sometime in the near future, you know, and that's what we have to anticipate as well. And how are those gonna mesh with this site? So I think, I think looking at the site as a whole, you know, I think the developers and um, the engineers and architects did a pretty good job of trying to balance all of those current needs as well as what um, is happening. Yes, we are gonna get more traffic out of the deal. Um, and I just, I, I don't necessarily um, necessarily wanna pin this, my decision on this development on just traffic. Um, and so I just um, I, I, I think there is gonna be traffic off the residential lots, um, off the residential side, but you know, it's, it's I don't know how we're gonna balance this otherwise and put anything else on this site that's not gonna generate traffic. Anything above what we have is gonna generate traffic. But you know, I think overall, I just, you know, wanted to just kind of echo some of these concerns or maybe clarify on some of these things and how, you know, I guess I was taking a look at them and how they maybe, you know, shine some light on some of these difficult issues with this site. But I, I did have one question. Um, actually two, two questions real quickly then. Um, ADA access, I was looking at for the site. Um, it looks like you didn't do any ADA access along Lyndale and the set, instead put that around towards the back because that's where the majority of your um, your ADA stalls are gonna, your parking stalls are gonna be. Is that correct?
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Penn, we do, we do have handicap access on both sides of the project. To be clear, um, there are handicap stalls uh, on the rear of the project and, and those would, those would be the primary entrance of for commercial or for residential, if you're parking on that rear surface parking lot. But there are accessible sloped walks for both the residential entry as well as the commercial entries that front Wyndale as well. So um, there, you saw the steps of the site plan there, but there's also a sloped walk uh, for a direct access on the front side of, on Wyndale.
There is. Okay, thank you. Um, and then one, one last question about vegetative screening then, you know, I'm gonna echo Commissioner Rudolph's concern about the three to four foot fence. And I, I understand the rationale why you'd put the three to four foot fence along that parking lot for the apartment complex directly to the east. Um, and then you said you're gonna step it up for those two northern homes that run up to the next block. Um, and was there, was there any discussion about actually having um, vegetative screening on the residential side with some of those homeowners that are there rather than putting it on your own property? I don't know how that crosses any legal boundaries, but it seems like in the spirit of cooperation, other times we've seen where you, you know, in, even to echo Commissioner Quam's concern about the, the tree allocation, um, and being able to maybe increase that count where you're able to allocate, you know, one to four more trees across each of those properties. Um, and at least get some more canopy covered in a few areas, you know, I mean, it gets, it depends on how much light people want to versus privacy, but um, I'm just kind of curious if you've considered working with the private landowners on those issues.
Commissioner Penn, uh, good, good question. Thank you. Um, we have, we have thought about areas to basically enhance screening on this, on this project. Uh, we hadn't specifically talked about um green screening on that fence, be it the six foot fence, uh, the six foot portion or the four foot portion. Um, but I think um, we would be open to, to consideration of that. Um, on, on, it is, it is very tight on our side of the uh, project, uh, up against our, our sidewalk. We wanna make sure we have an ample sidewalk through there. Um, but I, I don't think um, at this time, we've, we've had any discussions just yet from green area along either side of that wall. Um, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for it now.
Um, I, I'd like to open up the public hearing if that's all right with everyone and then we can discuss more afterward. Okay, um, uh, so the public hearing is for anyone to call into our meeting. We have callers waiting. Um, and you can give live comments on what we're talking about. Specifically for this issue, the number is six one two eight six one zero six five one. Let's see. I think I read the, okay, I think I read that already. So uh, moderator, we have a caller. So this is directions to the callers. You have up to five minutes to share your comments or questions. If you're speaking for a group of three or more, have you, have each person state their name and address and then the representative has up to ten minutes to speak. Then callers please. Yeah, callers please. Callers, please mute your phone while you're waiting to speak. Uh, if you can hear me. Um, so the quest, your, your questions will be collected and answered after the final call. Um, again, please mute your device that you're watching this meeting on to reduce feedback. And you can start by clearly stating your name and address, then begin your comments or questions. The chair will interrupt you if you're nearing your five minutes or if we cannot hear you clearly. So could we have our first caller go ahead and start with your name and your comments?
Hi, my name is Alex Osmus. I'm on six four zero one Harriet Avenue. And like many in the residential area behind this development, I'm concerned about the traffic and street parking. I remember when the Henley two apartments over on sixty-fourth were being discussed. That was a heated topic of debate because a one point two five parking ratio was seemed like not enough in uncharted waters. And now we, it looks like we are proving similar. I know the developer sounds like they are trying to push for a one point four, but I think it would be important for us to consider requiring a minimum of one point four, if not one point five, because we are already seeing significant parking pressure in the neighborhood due to existing developments. And that's not even counting the new development on sixty-fourth that hasn't even hardly begun construction. As far as the street traffic, I have a big concern with the traffic exiting the rear onto sixty-fourth and a half, especially due to commercial properties. If different businesses such as restaurants or retailer there, we've already seen parking issues a block long or more due to Lynn sixty-five, and that was one single restaurant in the existing structure. If they bring in other good businesses and restaurants that are popular, I can see that increasing even further. That's prior to COVID, obviously. So those are my comments. I just, I'm concerned about the parking. Uh, there's many, many children in the neighborhood directly behind this. Small children, probably at least two dozen, and I'm just concerned for the, the safety due to the parking and traffic that's going to be increased in this neighborhood. So thank you for my comments and I'll listen on.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time to call in. I believe we have um, more callers. Another caller is waiting. Caller, go ahead and start with your name and your address and your, what you'd like to share with us. Welcome. Can you hear me, caller? Caller, hi, welcome. Would you ask, you're here in our meeting now, so welcome. And could you start with your, your name and your address and then go ahead with your questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ava McKnight. I'm a newish resident, um, not in that area specifically, though I shop over there. Um, I appreciate the commissioner's questions and um.
Excuse me, Ava, could we have your address too? Could you state your address, please?
Six nine, yep, six nine three five eleventh Avenue South.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Um, well, I appreciate the um, questions. I'm, I'm on a learning curve with you all, uh, just learning how you are welcoming development in and questioning it at the same time. Um, I come from, uh, I'm a master water steward, trained in the many Ha Ha Watershed District. And um, I also am very concerned about our green space. When I look at the building, my first thoughts are, yeah, the trees. Um, where's the green roof? So to the commissioners, I, I would hope that we are leveraging leveraging the, the resources that we have and the space that we're allowing the developers. And to do, to the developers, I'm hoping that you see the advantage that you're getting being in our community, which is um, not an urban community that you keep referring to. Yes, we are getting higher density, but we also need to balance it. Um, I'm looking for BMPs like uh, trench, tree trenches. So the stormwater is going um, right where it is rather than going into it. It sounds like you're planning a system. Um, underground, I'd like to hear more about that. Um, naturalized planting that invites the um, native habitat so that we are living in a um, a full environment and not some cardboard trees that have heat like sod between them and are not soaking in the water right there. Um, green roof, I, I can't remember if I mentioned that, but as I'm looking at your um, when you showed the um, mock-up, that, that was my first thought. It's like a hot, again, people are gonna be walking by, there's no public space, it's hot and exposed. And I think that perhaps some of the mitigation of the loss of trees. And I think that perhaps some of the mitigation of the loss of trees could be done with some newer BMPs that people are doing in development, thank you.
Thank you Ms. McKnight, appreciate your call. Ready for the next caller?
Hello?
Hi caller, welcome to our meeting, would you start by stating your name and your address and then go ahead?
Yes, my name is Debbie Eng and I live at six three three four Grand Avenue. And basically I've been watching because I want, I'm planning to provide public comment to the garden issue. However, this, this issue also affects me and I guess I've been, I've been listening to this and a number of things come to mind, I testified last July regarding the Henley development and some of the issues that was raised, particularly in terms of traffic and parking, public transit, transit, these kind of things. And I still think there's a number of issues that are being raised that I really urge the commissioners to look carefully at. Number one question I have for a developer is is there a cost for parking in the public lot? And the reason I ask that because in the Henley development there is and it's about seventy dollars a month. And you know, it's easy to jump to the point where, well, if I was a young professional, I would park in the street rather than the lot. So that increases, increases pop, the parking issue. The other thing is that I think we have a mistaken concept that public transit is going to solve everything. I know a number of people that, that bus and I know a number of people that bike, but all of them also own cars. I also get concerned about the shade issue and I think somebody had mentioned, well, it's sunny during the growing season. Actually, what about the mental health issues about shade in the winter months? It's not just the growing issue, growing season, it, it has to do with a lot of other things. The watershed issue also concerns me, so as a vibrant community, it's kind of, we're being picked a little bit at a time and I just would encourage all the commissioners to look at, we are a vibrant neighborhood and we have a number, as Alex mentioned, we have a number of young children and young families in this area. We're inclusive, we have a number of cultures represented, these kind of things. So again, I guess I would ask the commission to truly look at all of these issues as a whole. You add them up, you know, there might be little bits and pieces here and there, but you add them up and I think we've got some issues here. The tree issue, the shade issue, the parking, the traffic, the water. And how that all impacts our neighborhood. Thank you very much and I will be back on the other issue, take care, bye bye.
Thank you. We'll wait for the next caller, no more callers at this time. Wait one more minute, six one two eight six one zero six five one. All right, so no more callers waiting, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing? And then staff, if you could answer their questions from the public hearing?
I'm moved to close the public hearing.
I'll move to second it.
Thank you. Did you get that Nellie? Yes, you, you got the names, okay. Thank you.
Chair Quam.
Ryan?
I'll just, I'll just mention that we did receive a few correspondences, two of which were forwarded to the commission. One from a Rich and Mary Lux and the other from a Heidi Gabor, apologies for pronunciation. And then I did also receive a voicemail from Ms. Rome, or Ralph, excuse me. And she expressed concern over the density and the, a concern of this not consisting of single family home ownership.
Thank you for jumping in there Ryan, I, I missed that. Any others ahead of time that we received or is that all of it? All right, thank you, so there was a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any discussion on closing the public hearing? All right, Nellie, would you please take your call?
Yes, I will, thank you. Chair Quam?
Hi.
Commissioner Keneely?
Hi.
Commissioner Lavin?
Hi.
Commissioner Penn?
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Hi.
Commissioner Sturza?
Hi.
All eyes and the motion passes.
Wonderful, thank you. So now would, staff, could you, I know you gathered the questions, could you answer some of the questions, the questions we heard just now from people?
So basically, there was concern over the amount of, or potential issue of a restaurant tenant being in place. I will point out that staff's recommendation does include a restriction that no more than forty five hundred square feet of the commercial space be dedicated to a restaurant without further review of an amendment to the conference of plan. Any, any space exceeding that, so I'll just make a note of that. There was concern over mitigation for impervious surfaces. Again, maybe the design team can go over some of the, the ins and outs of that stormwater management system, but it, it is an underground system on the northeast corner. They're required by ordinance to meet a number of standards, basically to, that they can't increase the rates or flow or the volume of stormwater runoff from the existing condition so that, that system is designed to accommodate that over a number of modeled storms. There's concerns over the use of planting, natural plantings and tree trenches. Maybe the design team can speak to that. But there's, there's not anything that I'm aware of in our code that would require that. It certainly would be up to something in terms of a code amendment that the commission can look at in, in the future in terms of maybe setting out some BMPs to mitigate for instances where impervious surfaces exceeded such as this. But again, that's not currently memorialized and there was can, the issue of green area, excuse me, green roofs was brought up again, I would kind of chop that into a similar vein. And I believe we've touched on traffic and parking a number of times. So those were, those were all that I had, Melissa, did you catch anything that I missed?
I, I did not, I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the perking comments and mention again that the perking meets the minimum requirements of the code. And while you can consider whether or not you would want to offer the transit reduction, the one point two five is the code minimum and that's the standard that you are asked to apply and the project meets that requirement.
This is Chair Quam, quick question for Ryan, who, if, if they chose, if they wanted to increase that restaurant square footage, who would review that application, would it come before us?
That would be, yeah, the way it would be, it would be a amendment to the conditional use permit. So it'd be go before the planning commission and, and the city council for approval.
Okay, thank you, and, and then Melissa, as far as it meeting the parking, you know, requirement adequately, isn't it complicated by the fact that there's commercial space and we don't know who will be in there? I mean, does it still need it even though there's variables with the commercial space?
Chair Quam, Ryan can probably answer this better as he provided the calculations that are in your report. But essentially it was run with several different models of what that commercial space will be. And Ryan, maybe you can give more details.
Yeah, so what, what's typically done from, from what I can tell is that basically the best guess is around three point five stalls per thousand for the commercial space. That's averaging a mix of commercial service and retail, so that's, that's what was applied. And with that calculation, not even including the 10% reduction, they would still comply with one point two five for the residential piece and that three point five per thousand for the commercial. Again, that's our kind of best guess at what kind of a mix would be realistic.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavin?
Yeah, I would, you know, I'd, I'd like to circle, well, first of all, I have a couple of just general comments and one, you know, having looked at, and, and, and looked at the schematics of the, of the, of the project. I think it's a, I think it's a great investment for Richfield, it certainly replaces an aging property, which, you know, I think that from our capital base, it's, it's, it's a positive. So I mean, and, and you're never going to get anything that satisfies all concerns, but I do appreciate the developer being open and talking about these, these issues that have come up. I do want to direct my comments back to parking because I'm having a concern with, with how staff is looking at this versus what I've heard from the developers. You know, I think staff is looking at this as an all up high of parking spaces. And I think the developers have said themselves that they are concerned with the, you know, making sure that there's adequate parking for residents. And, and typically, I'm wondering if we could, you know, have a, have a minimum of what that would be, one point three five is what they're indicated in their drawings. If they would commit to that, then, you know, you, like everyone says, we don't know what the, what the commercial is going to envelop or what it's going to, going to end up being. But I think if we could all get comfortable with the fact that the residential properties are locked in at, at a ratio that would, you know, protect the, the neighborhood from parking, that would certainly be a, a good start rather than just deferring to the lowest denominator as a practice, which I, I can't stand. So I mean, for this particular project, I, I think if the developer is willing and, and, and to make a commitment for a certain ratio for residential parking, then we should adopt that and we should be, we should be available to support that. And, and so the second thing I wanted to just ask is, I'm not sure, because I, I couldn't tell, but is, is the parking structure going to be, you know, like access, restricted access, or is it going to be open for like anyone to park there? Or do you need a pass? I, I wouldn't, I, I don't know how that would operate. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, those are my comments, but I, I do, I do like, I guess I would like to hear the developer if you would be open to having a minimum residential parking ratio at set at like one point three five, one point four, thank you.
Quick answer to your first, to your second question, the parking structure is reserved for tenants of the building. So that would not be, you would need a FOB to get in to, get into that.
And how many spaces is that in the parking structure?
I'm going to let somebody a whole lot smarter than me answer that one.
I could, Commissioner, I would answer your question, in total residential parking on the whole project is two hundred and twenty two stalls. I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty stalls on the whole, are you looking for just the enclosed?
Yeah.
As well, okay.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be able to be used for a commercial, so.
Right, so that, so the two hundred and twenty are, are all residential. Now, a portion of those exists on the surface. So of, of the, of the total here, I'll give you, I'll give you those numbers, so the two hundred and twenty, only thirty of them are on the surface, so two hundred and ninety of them are enclosed.
Okay, so there's, they'll be designated residential for, and that equates to about a one point three eight, I think one point three nine ratio for residents, that's going to be designated residential parking.
Commissioner Lavin, that's correct, per, per the city code, we actually are at one point three five, as you noted correctly. And that has to do with the, the slight difference there is to deal with the tandem stalls of a previously.
Okay, I mean, and, and so the balance will really, you know, kind of direct what kind of commercial can go in there. I mean, you wouldn't be able to have a really large restaurant based on what's left on the surface lot. Then what you want to do, again, well, I mean, because it's, it's eight thousand square feet or seven thousand square feet, ten per, ten per thousand square feet, that'd be seventy, eighty spaces. Unless I'm doing that, okay.
Correct, I mean, like I said, it's, it's and, and it's, it's partially that the ten per spaces, it really depends on the uses. Is it a, is it a dinner place, is it a breakfast place, is it a coffee house, is it a, all of those things will, will go into, you know, what time of day traffics there, how long traffic is there, stuff like that. But yeah, no, it's, we're very realistic about what our retail users are going to be. I'm not going to say that we wouldn't love to have a restaurant there, I would tell you that we haven't been real successful at finding restaurants for any of our projects in four states lately, because restaurants have just had a, a pretty tough time in the last year. But for, none of them seem to want to expand a lot right now.
But for all the callers on the phone and from a residential perspective, you're looking at a, a defined, you know, somewhere between one point three five, one point four parking ratios for those residents that are dedicated residential lots. So I think that's, that answers my question, that should answer the questions for people that are out there wondering, because this is a very different scenario than what's been proposed in this area previously, which has been down to one point one five even, was proposed at one point one to one. So I mean, this is, I think there's a difference, so I just wanted to point that out, thank you.
So Commissioner Sturza and then Commissioner Rudolph.
I'd just say that the development seems to be well suited for the guiding on the land and what we have talked about for this area, the density and traffic that comes along with it, I think are appropriate for the site. In terms of any sort of parking, it's pretty clear from staff report that this is needing our city code. I don't think that we can, I don't think that we should require any developer to do something that's not within code. So if there is an issue with parking, I think we have to look at the code and not this proposal. I don't think that we should ask anything of the developer that our code doesn't ask of our developer for this proposal in terms of parking. I like it, I'm concerned about pedestrian and bike access in this area. I think that that should be on our minds because of, it's on Lindale. But I, I think it's an exciting development.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Yeah, I, I'm following up on the hundred and ninety spots that are in the building or in, I'm assuming in a ramp, are those paid or unpaid? Are residents going to, you know, obviously, you know, I live next to a development, a large development as well, so it's kind of been on my mind, question was asked by one of the callers.
Yeah, we, we don't break it out as to having a parking or not. Parking is a part of their, their overall rent, so.
Okay, so it's not an extra fee or something like that, okay.
It, it is, but it, it, it will show up on their statement as such, because there's also like rubs, there's other things that are on there. But yes, it is, it is, it is, it's part of their rent payment.
All right, so are you concerned then, you know, I live next to the Chamberlain and, you know, during COVID, you know, I guess we have seen an overrun of the streets, which, you know, if there's a, is, if there's a large uptick in charge for rent for a parking spot, people are going to park on the streets. And I completely agree with that, because you know, I, I've seen it here and there is not been any enforcement from city on these streets during snowplow and the streets have been a mess. That's my concern. Yeah, I've seen reality of a new development.
Yeah, no, it's, listen, parking is one of the most important measures for us as a developer. We are the long-term owners of our properties, we don't sell them. We, we're the developers of our projects, we're the contractors for our projects, we're the managers for our projects and we're the owners for our projects. So everything we do from how we develop, we know where we develop, how we design it and how we manage it is how do we make sure that this property is a good property and a good neighbor for, you know, the thirty year loan that it's going to take me to pay this thing off? So one of the things that is the most important issue when it comes to renewals is parking and access. Because you can have the greatest amenities in the world, in the most beautiful building. beautiful building that's ever been designed. And if you're parking two blocks away and walking home every night after you've been at work all day, you're not renewing your lease. You're going to go find another one, another spot closer to work, a little farther to work, but someplace where you don't have to walk to your space. The only place that you can get away with that is in areas like downtown Minneapolis where people know and understand when they move into their, their place that they're going to have to figure out parking on their own. But when we're in a suburban, when we're in a suburban area, when we're, when we're in an area where we're providing parking and providing a parking lot, parking is a very, very important part of our equation that we study. So, and I always, I, my, my, my standard joke for this one is, is we're betting $40 million that we're, that we're not under parking it because, like I said, it absolutely affects our bottom line. It absolutely affects our tenant satisfaction and absolutely affects just the mood and everything of the place if we are underparked or have really poor access. So it's one of the things that, it's one of the reasons we did bring the, the building up was that we were able to get more parking places and more importantly, we were able to get more covered parking places. We wanted to be able to get more parking places without everyone having to see them. So that's why we were able to kind of accomplish that by getting a little bit creative on how we, how we ended up building the building.
This is Chair Kwam. I have a question for Commissioner Penn. Do you have, you don't seem to have too much concern or overall, but what about, since you live by the Novo and that elevation changed and there was a, the parking level was lifted to, you know, so that houses were looking at parking level. Do you have any concerns about that for this project? That they brought it up a story?
My concerns for Nova were.
Were thoughts?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My, my concerns for Nova were more that they were changed after the fact, after we had voted through the commission. And so had, you know, being that the expectation is set that this is the building height, this is what we're getting as part of the deal, it's, it's a whole different scenario for me. So I don't really have concerns as far as the aesthetic value of the parking either because it seems like they do a pretty good job of not making that look like part of parking, whereas Nova, they did the opposite. And so I, I think it's, yeah, I just, I, I think it, it works well for me for this development.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I know you have experience there. And then before, before Commissioner Rosenberg, there was a question referred to the developers from staff that was from one of the callers about just quickly describing the stormwater scenario. What does that look like? Sounds like she knew her stuff. If you want to take that.
Certainly, I can, I can answer that and we can follow up with more detail via civil engineer. So Chair Kwam, the, the question I believe was about the, the details of the stormwater system. So the stormwater system is, is about rate control. The water is, is more required by, by, by the state actually to improve the existing conditions, right? So the existing conditions are a bunch of surface parking lots and one-story buildings that don't deal with stormwater up to today's standards, put it that way. So the, the underground retention system will hold the stormwater for a certain amount of time and then slowly dissipate it in, back into the groundwater. So that's generally how, how it works. Again, it is under our paved parking lot in the northeast corner of the, of the site. And I know that the caller talks about rain gardens and other surface visible structures. I would say that many times on these projects, we do see that these underground systems actually produce equivalent or better conditions to those that are visible on the surface. And we are, again, going above what's required to improve the existing conditions from the current status of the site.
Mr. Verden, just quickly, are those systems relatively new? I don't know much about stormwater management. We're hearing more of them all the time about underground storm management systems.
Chair Kwam, this has been around for, for a while. This is not, this, this, this practice of doing stormwater retention this way is, has been done for quite, quite a few years. It is, it is very common in projects like this that are relatively urban and have zero outlines and have high impervious, as, as it has been noted, to mitigate those things that we're doing in an urban way to, to take care of the stormwater in, in a, in a, I'll just mention in a far superior way to an existing surface parking lot that, you know, was, was built 15 years ago.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rosenberg, thanks for waiting.
Sure. Just got a couple of things. And it's kind of the expand on what Chair Kwam said earlier in regards to this impervious area total. Does this, and this is probably from staff, is that, does that amenity plaza that's on the third floor, does that compensate enough for that? Because we're exceeding that maximum by, you know, 15%. That amenity, does that suffice that and keep it, keep us within code? I mean, I, I mean, what is that amenity plaza? Is that going to have like turf up there or is it going to have grass or is it, what is, I, I think we're really kind of stretching it, aren't we, a little bit? If that's going to be the, the way to keep us within code and we've got to make up for 15%, or am I just thinking wrong of this? Ryan, maybe you can help me with that. But that seems like that's not a whole, that doesn't seem really reasonable to me. You know, it seems to me like we're trying to, to push this building into a small piece of, of land. And I understand you're trying to get as many residences there for financial reasons. I get it. I've been around this game a long time. But it just seems like if we're really trying to make up for that shortfall with this amenity plaza on the third floor, that, is that really stretching it? But is that within code? Is that, is that legal to do? I mean, that's, that's what, I guess that's my bottom line on this.
So again, the, the PUD allows the flexibility to exceed that impervious area percentage. I don't precisely know if the amount, you know, I didn't run the calculations on all the, you know, the, the green surfaces on the top of the plaza, but there are some. Maybe Neil can expand on kind of what the programming is. But, you know, again, with that flexibility, it's, it's, it's getting you closer to than if you were to not count it, you know, the provision of that with green surfaces.
Okay. And, and the other thing too is the, the building area covers 70% of, of the space that's allotted. And it's, they said that we're getting closer to that 50% because of the structure of the podium parking. Is that the one that's on the second floor and that's count, I, I'm just not seeing how, maybe it's getting too late at night or something, but I, how does that structured parking get us closer to the code of 50, 50%?
I think where it's most visible is if you look at the fourth floor plan.
Yeah.
See, just kind of eyeballing it, that the building area covers about 50%. So if you go down to the third, then you're seeing the green area and the amenity plaza. So that, you know, that wasn't, you know, if, if that were to be surface parking, that would just be not counted against building coverage. So basically, all that's in that area is the structured second level parking and the amenity plaza on the third, third deck. So again, they're, they're, they raised it to, to provide the adequate amount of parking and treated it with green surfaces to, to mitigate that, you know, that overage, so to speak.
Well, if, if it's within code, I, you know, really have no, a lot, no real reason not to approve this, but it's, I think bottom line, I feel like it's being squeezed and so, but they're trying to get too much in a small area. And we wouldn't necessarily allow that in all our residential neighborhoods. And so I was, it's a stretch for me. Let's just put it that way. However, I think the, the building looks nice and, you know, all the things that everybody else has said. I am concerned about parking. I think we are putting too much emphasis on public transportation. We're not New York, we're not Chicago yet. So, but anyway, that's, that, those are the two things that I, it just feels like the building is, they're just trying to get too much building in a small square. But if those, if those adjustments fulfill the code, then, and that that's legal and we're doing the right thing, then I will, I will support it. I, like I said, with, if, if you're sure that that's, that's the, the code and what we're supposed to do. So, okay, thanks.
This is Chair Kwam. From what I understand, it's with being a planned, Commissioner Rosenberg, it being a plant, PUD, planned use development, it does not have to meet, you know, it, it varies from code. So.
And there is a variance, but there's still some, there's still standards.
Yeah. Hey, who has anybody else? This is Chair Kwam. I'm wondering, you know, if staff, Melissa is going to tell us about the process for making, you know, if we want to make an amendment to a motion, but I really don't know what our options are for amending this project at this time. I don't know if, I, I don't know, you know, what can be done to lessen the impervious space or to increase the trees or the green space or some of the other concerns. And I, I guess I have to agree, you know, I do, I hadn't thought of it, but what Commissioner Sturza said about, we really shouldn't require an applicant exceed our minimums because we should then just try to change the code if we think our minimums are wrong. So as much as I appreciate the, you know, I'm not saying I think that's enough. I'm not saying I think 1.25 is enough, but that is our code. So I don't, I don't feel either it's, that it would be right to require more of them. Yeah. Commissioner Penn, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Kwam. And the impervious coverage, I mean, being that this is my day and job, I just, this is what I do all day and night, I guess. But I, I think overall, looking at what the old site was excluding the house that was integrated as part of this, you know, that old site was darn near 80 to 100% impervious to start with as well. And I think, you know, this is a very dense situation. I'm, I'm fully, I want to say, I, I fully understand that, you know, it'd be nice to get some additional green space in there, but you know, from my, my perspective, it just seems like, you know, if we're hitting the stormwater requirements that are already set out by both local and state and even federal guidelines and rules, then, you know, there, there shouldn't be, you know, a lot of concern in terms of, you know, improving, at least maintaining that condition that it was before, if not improving it, you know, especially when it comes to rate control. And I, I think that's, you know, to me, that's the most important thing. I think long term, if we want more green space.
We're having a little trouble hearing you, Commissioner Penn. It's a little.
Sorry, you can't hear me at all?
No, I can't. It's just a little garbly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So I, I hope you didn't miss too much of that. Anyway, I'll, I won't talk too long, but I just think overall, like if, if we want green space to be a part of our consideration on top of stormwater for this impervious allotment, then I think that should be something that we need to expressly run out in our code as well. And I don't know if we can necessarily require that at this moment unless staff says otherwise, you know. Like, you know, but again, I have full faith that we, you know, they did the right modeling here.
Full faith what? I'm sorry, this Chair Kwam, I missed it. Full faith what?
That they had the right modeling and that they're, you know, meeting our requirements for stormwater and rate control, things like that. Sorry about my connection there.
That's okay. Commissioner Lavine?
Yes. Yeah, just real quick. You know, I'm absolutely fine with the level of parking in this, in this particular project based on what the ratios are and what the comments from the developer have been. I will remind this commission that the last project that we had in this neighborhood, city recommended that we approve it at the lowest denominator and we as a commission decided that that was too low and recommended that the developer come with more of a parking ratio. So I do think that's in our purview and absolutely in our scope. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Commissioners Sturza and then Chair Kwam.
I hate to cut off conversation and if anyone wants to continue conversation, I can delay making a motion to approve the ordinance relating to zoning, but if I'm being too forward and making that recommendation, I'll hold back, but I'm ready to, okay, sounds like somebody wants to make the comment.
I, I do have a question on the exit into 64th and a half. You know, I was over there today and it did seem kind of weird trying to, I, I, I drove around the property a couple of times. Actually, there's a, there's an exit from the parking lot to that little neighborhood kind of right now. And I'm not sure if there's, you know, an opportunity to close that off or if there's any serious issues with doing so or, you know, but yeah, I can understand the hesitancy of the neighbors wanting all that traffic coming into their neighborhood, you know.
Melissa?
Retail.
That access is needed for fire. It cannot be removed.
All right. Second question was where there is the three-foot fence, whether or not they're open to, you know, working that with, with neighbor, you know, if they want that increased, knowing that, you know, those kind of things can be, you know, helpful in being a good neighbor. That's my only concerns I have left.
Okay. All right. So any, any other discussion or questions? Would someone like to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa, would you tell us briefly the process? If someone did want to make an amendment to the motion?
Chair Kwam, the process to move and amend a motion would be for someone to move the original motion and a second. Following that, there could be any discussion. Someone could then make a motion to amend the original motion. That would need a second. If it was approved, you could vote on the whole. I don't get the impression that anyone is looking to make an amendment to this particular item, but I'm happy to walk that person through if there is such a desire.
Thank you. All right. Would someone like to make a more, original, make a motion? Commissioners Sturza?
And just to clarify with staff, a motion for the ordinance relating to the zoning and then a separate one for the resolution approving the final development plan, is that's what is being requested? Or, yeah, okay.
You can, you can move both items at the same time.
Okay. So I will make an, a motion to recommend approval for the ordinance relating to zoning, amending appendix to the Richfield city code by rezoning land at the northeast corner of Lindell Avenue and 65th Street as a planned use, as well as the resolution approving a final planned development and conditional use permit for a planned unit development at the northeast corner of Lindell Avenue and 65th Street.
All right. Do we have a second?
I will second. Commissioner Lavine?
Nellie, do you need clarification?
No, I got it. Thank you.
Okay. So discussion on that motion? All right. And do we have? Is there any, are we ready to vote on that? Or is somebody proposing an amendment? I guess we're ready to vote on that. Okay, Nellie, would you take roll call?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Chair Kwam?
Hi.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Lavine?
Aye.
Commissioner Penn?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
All ayes, the ayes have it and the motion passes.
Thanks, Nellie. Congratulations too. You got the pass. Thanks, Nellie. Congratulations too. You got passed as, as it came to the meeting. So thank you for attending our meeting and for your, all your input. All of you. So you are welcome to log out of the WebEx meeting. We're going to move on to a totally different topic, but we appreciate your presence. Right. So we have a second public hearing. One moment. Okay. Our second public hearing will consider a proposed ordinance amendment to modify rules related to home occupations. I'm wondering, and I'm, I'm not necessarily requesting this, but if we are, are we wanting to take a three-minute break or just go?
I request a three-minute break as well.
Is that doable, staff? Say, this might be a longer public hearing also.
You would need to vote on that.
Okay.
The motion to take a ten-minute or five-minute recess and then the commission would have to vote.
Okay, this is Chair Kwam and I'm making a motion that the planning commission take a five-minute recess before we go on.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All right, Nellie, would you take roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam?
Hi.
Commissioner Keneely?
Hi.
Commissioner Levin?
Hi.
Commissioner Penn?
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Hi.
Commissioner Sturso?
Hi.
All eyes and the motion passes.
Thank you. See you at about eight fifty-seven. Thanks. All right, welcome back, everyone. Thanks for the break. So our second public hearing will consider a proposed ordinance amendment to modify rules related to home occupations. We're, so we're considering an ordinance amendment. I'm not going to read an introductory statement on that because we've done that at the last two meetings, basically in keeping with the code. So staff, would you read your report, please?
Yes, thank you. The purpose of the home occupation rules are to allow home occupations that are appropriate for residential settings to protect those conducting a home occupation from self-induced harm and to protect the property rights of neighbors. At the request of the city council and in reaction to activities over the past year, staff have reviewed the current zoning regulations, the comprehensive plan and recent complaints related to home occupations. Based on this review, staff is recommending the following provisions. To clarify that operators of a home occupation must reside at the premises full-time. To add an exception that will allow the growing of food or ornamental crops for sale or donation off-site, outdoors, so long as materials are maintained in a clean and orderly manner. To clarify, commercial vehicle allowances, to clarify the prohibitions related to home retail sales to include the distribution of goods and to allow one non-resident employee in addition to resident employees by right. City staff has written the proposed ordinance changes in an effort to balance community needs and business needs. The proposed regulations should ensure that local food production can be supported while minimizing the more disruptive aspects of commercial businesses that are often bothersome to neighbors. Some additional points that staff wanted to highlight are that at present, all residents in Richfield can grow food at home and share that food with friends and family. There are no limits as to the size or placement of either food or ornamental gardens on private residential property with the exception of site triangles at corners. Community gardens and produce distribution is allowed at institutional sites like schools, parks and churches. Home occupations can provide affordability and flexibility for business owners and employees, particularly small entrepreneurs. Businesses that generate noise, traffic or have similar noticeable effects tend to cause complaints from neighbors and have historically been prohibited as home occupations. Staff reviewed the home occupation regulations of nearby and peer communities, Bloomington, Eagan, Edina, Hopkins, Minneapolis and St. Louis Park. None of the cities allowed home occupation-related retail sales from residential properties. None of the suburban cities currently allow production or market gardening as a home occupation. Staff understands that some community members and policymakers may be interested in allowing the distribution or sale of homegrown produce from a residential property. In that case, staff would recommend a specific provision to allow distribution of produce through CSA pickup and drop-off without a specified limit on the daily number of CSA box pickups. Because it would be difficult for staff to enforce, it may not be realistic for a grower who would usually organize harvesting for a larger scale pickup instead of smaller multi-day pickups. And it would be difficult for farmers outside the city who might deliver a weekly load of CSA boxes to a residential home for community pickup. And we did receive written comments from Alex Asmus, Gary Oslo, Stephanie King and Deborah Eng, which were distributed to commissioners and were posted on the website. And that concludes the staff report and staff can stand for any questions.
Thank you. So next, the commissioners have questions for staff. Commissioner Levin?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I visited the, the CSA that, that I think that, that, that's the subject of this change. And I, I really can't see how it would ever grow to the scale of, of an issue with traffic. I think that, you know, I'm not exactly sure how they work, but the number of shares, excuse me, that are allowed or would be available to be allowed doesn't seem to me to be any more than what would a take care of traffic be or something similar of that nature. But I, the question I have is, you know, are we, one, are we, I, I want to make sure that we're not setting a precedent here that would make it more, make it easier for another business of maybe a, a type that, that would, would cause more of a concern to be established based on what we're doing for this particular type of business. Two, I think that, that, I, I think that it would be agreeable that, that if it was self-contained that we weren't looking at, you know, large deliveries from outside agricultural areas that then would be distributed, which would cause a much larger amount of volume. How to, you know, so how do we, how do we balance that? I mean, I, I think that we all want to, you know, especially if, if the neighbors agree that, that it's something that, that's desirable and it can be controlled from a volume standpoint, how do we, how do we create an ordinance that allows for that activity? Does not get blown in. I, I guess a volume that, that we're not anticipating or, or would be undesirable. So I, you know, sorry for the long-winded question, but I guess I'll, I'll, I'll hand it back to staff with those concerns.
So I think, I think with our proposal, currently, all retail sales related to any home occupation would not be prohibited. So I think that does sort of keep home occupations within, you know, a reasonable size limit. And our proposal for, if, if policymakers wanted to allow pickups, you could regulate just allowing CSA pickups of food that would keep it to a mostly reasonable scale and you wouldn't have just like a market stand because it would all be, it would all be pre-ordered, pre-boxed. But we, staff would still recommend that all sales would be, would continue to be prohibited.
Just one, one quick follow-up if I, if I could. Would, would, I guess, what would staff's opinion be is if we allowed only sales from plants or vegetables grown on that specific property? So we wouldn't have the situation of, you know, something that could grow out of control if it was, if there was, you know, a certain level or size of volume that would be trucked in and then distributed from a single location. If we're talking what we would really like to support is your neighborhood garden, your neighborhood, you know, CSA that involves a relatively small amount of participants. Is that something that we've considered where we would just allow only that product that's been grown on that particular lot? Thank you.
Commissioner Levin, that's something that you could consider. I think that it does kind of get into the weeds when you per, permit the sale of produce but not other goods. So I'm not a lawyer, but I think that, that you would have, you might run into issues with that.
Commissioner Levin, I'm sorry, just to follow up on that. Staff has been reading this as this is a retail use like any other retail use that is prohibited in the residential districts and our understanding is that in general, people like to continue to prohibit retail sales in residential districts. We are recommending that if you wanted to allow CSAs, there might be justification for that based on the fact that it is local food and the Minnesota constitution does in some cases call out local food in different ways than it does other uses. That said, we could open ourselves to an equal protections case. It would really, that nothing like that has gone to the courts that we're aware of. It would be, it would be potential. I don't know how likely it would be.
Was it Commissioner Rudolph?
What, you know, you, you'd mentioned retail clause in there, you know, what is, you know, what is considered retail? You know, a lot of people work from their home, especially during this pandemic. A lot of people have been moved out of maybe some of their retail office locations to work from home with the shutdown and things like that. What are those inclusions? Are we going to be limiting people at this point of time right now? Additionally, I'm just curious. It was, you know, I, I, I just want to make sure that we don't do something prohibitive with everybody during this pandemic, you know, look at us right here. We're all working from home in this capacity as well. Would this be providing any more limitations for those people right now?
Commissioner Rudolph, this would not be providing more limitations. The current rules are that you cannot have retail sales with the exception of goods that are incidental to the current home occupation, the current business. So the example is you can sell shampoo if you are operating a hairdressing service out of your home. But you can't be a shampoo salesperson exclusively. That's the only, that kind of thing is the only exception. Otherwise, the, the rules would stay as they are.
Okay.
And, and the exception is staying as it is as well.
How about if we open the public hearing and then continue our discussion? Like to get that a little closer to the front end of our. To open the public hearing, anyone? Yes, okay. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Chair Kwam, you don't need to make a motion to open the public hearing. You can just.
Oh, I thought I saw you nod. Okay, so now we'll have a public hearing for anyone who wants to call in on this issue to our meeting tonight. You can call in live to comment or ask questions. The number is six one two eight six one zero six five one. And the same rules or guidelines applies. We ask you to state your name and your address clearly. To mute your device that you're watching us on, otherwise we won't be able to hear you very well. To limit your input to five minutes unless you're speaking for a group of three or more. And let's see. I think that's it. And, and the chair will interrupt you if you're nearing your five minutes or if I can't, if we can't hear you clearly. So we're ready for the first caller, moderator. Are you there?
Okay. Yeah, this, this is Alex.
Hi, Alex. Hi, Alex, would you state your full name and address, please, and then go ahead? Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. My name's Alex Asmus, I'm at 6401 Harried Avenue. And I have some concerns with the way the proposed amendments are written. First of all, the proposed amendments do use the words continuous and regular, which are very nebulous terms and provide no context, especially when we're trying to, what it looks like, use a broad brush sort of regulation against a very extremely nuanced set of subjects. I think this would cause significant gray area, not just in the distribution of garden products, but any products. So, a question would be, would this prohibit also the sales of fitness training out of one's home, or any other type of business, whether virtual or not? So, I think to simply blanket prohibit continuous or regular sales or distribution of different products, or just in general, that it's too nuanced to be able to do that. I think clarifying this would be a significant task with much nuance needed, so I don't know that it would be, it would be a slippery slope to just blanket approve something like that. Secondly, it's kind of disconcerting to assume that the changes are a result of what sounds like a single traffic complaint, but with no input previous to this proposal from additional stakeholders. So, I hope today can be that, that place where we can do that. So, my, my last comment, so I'm the next-door neighbor to the CSA that's sparked a lot of this, this conversation. And from my opinion, it's understandable to implement forward-looking restrictions on certain use of personal property that could be of detriment or cause danger. Obviously, if someone's selling weapons out of their garage, that might be something we want to prevent, but vegetables are a whole different thing. What does not make sense is what the city is trying to prevent by not allowing occasional pickup or distribution of vegetables. This seems like not just an unreasonable burden to the distributors, but also those picking up, like myself, who lives next door and enjoys walking over, meeting my neighbors, and being able to grab a bag of goods and go. Being the next-door neighbor, I can honestly tell you that traffic is virtually unnoticed, especially when you consider the apartment buildings, which we just talked about a few minutes ago, that are going up, considering the construction, and just frankly, some of the traffic we see from the other private residents in the area. It's negligible at best. I fear that moving forward with the changes sets a precedent to any future urban farm or any other cottage business in general in Richfield. It shows we are not governing with care and consideration, but with blanket policy towards nuanced situations. It is especially important to consider ramifications, given the current economic challenges, as it was just stated, given COVID, because everyone's trying to find creative ways to make ends meet, and this would be against that. And every decision that the commission makes right now, especially on topics like this, will reverberate largely. So, I did notice in the packet that there is a potential alternative to add special language allowing for the distribution, given that they are CSA out of the private residence, and I would support that amendment. But what I especially don't want to support is anything that restricts in blanket the sales or distribution in general of products or services, which is another gray area of what we consider a product or a service. So, I yield back to the next caller, and thanks for allowing me to make comments.
Thanks for your input. Get ready for the next caller. Hi, caller, are you there?
Yes.
Oh, welcome. Could you start by saying your name and spelling your last name, and then saying your address, just so we can understand your name, and then go ahead?
Yeah, this is Jason Reese, along with Reese, R-E-E-S-E, with Courtney Kupch, K-U-P-C-H. We're from 6400 Grand Avenue South. We are the people that operate the CSA. I guess, starting off, I'd just like to say that when we began this CSA operation, we were trying to do something helpful to our neighbors. This is something that I've worked on for 10 years throughout my career as a teacher with special needs students and at-risk youth. I didn't think I was going to get emotional about this, but it's, it's pretty frustrating the amount of pushback we've gotten from the city staff and the lack of cooperation that we were promised last July, and the promise that we would be part of the process of making this proposed change, and we have been completely left out. And this is the first time that we've had a chance to talk to any of you. I think it would be more valuable for you guys to be able to ask us questions at this point. We've been waiting for people to ask us questions since this happened in July, and was happy to have Commissioner Lavine stop by today and ask some questions. There are serious needs in our community for something like this. There are serious problems that are very modern and new, that we're not, that we were not aware of, we are not even concerned with when these zoning codes were written. We have issues with obesity-related illness, we have issues with climate change that this kind of operation helps to alleviate. As far as the retail sales concerns here, we are not trying to set up a stand or a retail market on our property. We run a membership-based model. We get paid before the, the season starts, and we try to actually limit the amount of time that people are spending picking up produce. It is not in our interest to be sitting around trying to sell produce to people randomly off the street. That's, that's a waste of our time, to be quite honest. We, we want to have people pay in the beginning, we want to have the produce ready, we want it to be fresh, we don't want anything to go to waste, and we want to get it to our neighbors who need it. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to provide access to quality, fresh produce. This is something I've tried to work with in the school system. It's challenging there, it's now challenging here. If I, if I sound like I'm upset, it's because I've been working really, really hard for my whole career to try to make these things work and try to bring this fresh produce to people. And what I tend to find is that I get pushback quite often, and I was really, really hoping that we would be brought in and be a part of the process here, rather than having something shoved in our face and then asked to react at the last minute. This, this has been on the radar since last July. Our council members asked Ms. Pelman and Ms. Jerome to take us in on this. I appreciate Ms. Jerome's research, and I appreciate everything she's done. I think we needed other stakeholders involved in this process, and none of them have been included. I would be happy to talk to any of you about what CSAs are all about, what the scale is that's even realistic on a property like ours. The traffic is not an issue. We cannot provide produce for more. If we were operating at peak efficiency, we could, we could offer produce to maybe 20 families in a week. We're not interested in operating at that level. We want to, last year, we took in 17 shares a week because people demanded it. We were in the middle of a pandemic, people worried about their food supply, they were worried about going into markets to get their food, and whether they were going to get sick there. We provided a safe option for them. We had to turn people away because they wanted, they wanted this product. We are not trying to make some sort of outrageous profit off this. We are basically breaking even. This could be slightly profitable in the future, but this is basically there to help people out, to start a conversation about food, to educate people about growing food, connect us with the, with the environment, talk about the issues that are important going forward, and actually bring people together and have a conversation with our neighbors. We've probably met over 100 people that we never would have met just walking by.
Excuse me, Mr. Reese, you're reaching your five minutes, Mr. Reese? Could you wrap it up?
I just, yeah, I just want to emphasize, this is not a retail model that we're running, it's a membership-based model. So, I strongly urge that we move forward with allowing the horticulture and agriculture onsite, the gardening onsite, the market gardens, and that you allow a CSA exemption. And what I would really like to do is be part of a work group, and develop a work group to codify the rules around an urban agriculture policy, because that was never offered up. I would like to help in bringing the stakeholders that, that should be writing this policy and helping the staff do that. Thanks, I appreciate the time to speak.
Thank you. Ready for our next caller? Are you there, caller? Hi there, welcome to the meeting. If you want to start with your name and spell your last name and give us your address, and then go ahead with your, your comments or questions, and we'll answer those at the end. Go ahead.
Hi, Debbie Eng again. I live at 6334 Grand Avenue South, and I'm a neighbor that has been able to take advantage of the CSA of Jason and Courtney, and I've got to tell you, it's, it's been a wonderful experience. Like Alex, I walk over there, so I get to combine exercise with fresh food, and it works out for me. I wanted to support the alternative recommendation where, to allow the distribution and sale of homegrown products from a residential property. I think Commissioner Lavine made a good point about growing specifically on the property, and that certainly makes a lot of sense. I would also suggest that to look at this similar to the beekeeping city code that's listed, I think, City Code 906, that outlines some standards and regulations around the beekeeping and sale of honey. I believe that Jason, as he just mentioned, would be a wonderful resource to help the city develop regulations and standards around this issue. So, that basically, I think it's a good thing, and why would we deny, why would the city choose to deny such a community asset? We have people walking and, with their little kids stopping and, you know, picking off a vegetable off the vine, and it's, it's just been a wonderful thing. The other thing I note is that it gets, in the executive summary, it talks about recent complaints. My belief, it has been supposedly one complaint, and it was about traffic. And I find that really ironic, given our previous discussion tonight regarding those issues, and also in July, regarding all the issues with the other development. Please don't shut this down. This is, this has been a wonderful thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, caller, are you there?
Yes.
I'm welcome, go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead, and please.
Yeah, my name is Ava McKnight, M-C-K-N-I-G-H-T, 6935 11th Avenue South. I'm hoping you can hear me better than the last time I spoke.
Yeah, I'm clear.
I am, good, okay. Jason and Alex, I'm supporting really what they have said so far. I think Alex, I was having trouble hearing Jason at the end also, but Alex was, he expressed the support of some of parts of the amendment, and then also saying that not wanting to do a blanket, and a blanket decline of all retail. And one of the things that I keep picturing is eggs, or like other products that people are creating and selling or growing. And I, I just think that Richfield needs to continue to enter this, I'm sorry, I'm going to be rude, and like be modern, and come up into what we need to be as a resilient community right now. And I am questioning the staff that said that they did their research. The research that I did, at least in conjunction with other citizens who are working with similar things that are getting, Inver Grove Heights was one, St. Anthony was one. And there's a document that I sent to commissioners that have a comparison, and Minneapolis certainly allows market gardens. So, I, I'm not sure, at least what I read the, how I read the ordinance, and what the comparison chart that, that these residents had created. And I'm willing to send that to any of you as well. So, I'm, I would like clarification on that, for one. The next item is the climate change plan that Richfield has. It opens up with the discussion of the heat island effect. And I think that, again, I know you're saying that, that growing and maintaining gardens is acceptable. However, I think that we need to, again, open up to what are people's needs, what are people's needs now? And I think that growing food is one of them, sharing it, and offsetting that cost as well is one, one thing that I've run into. I'm looking here, the heat island effect. I personally, I'm not a food gardener as much as I am a native plant gardener, and as I mentioned previously, a master water steward. So, my, my activities have to do with that. And part of your amendment was adding the words clean and orderly, which also can get interpreted. And I, I think that our aesthetics are changing, and they have to change if we are going to survive the, the heat and the flooding that we are experiencing more and more. I, I will end with that. I just support, oh, there was one other thing, and that, that is, it appears to me that this is a change in city code to just target one family and one situation, and I'm concerned about that. I do want to thank you all for your thoughtful comments in the last discussion, as well as this one. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have no more callers. So, do we have, well, before we do that, before we close the public hearing, staff, did we have any letters or voicemails messages ahead of the meeting, other than what were in the packet?
I did not get any more comments or voicemails.
Okay, thank you. Would someone make a motion to close the public hearing? Commissioner Penn, I would like to close the public hearing. Thank you, Chair Quam, seconds. In the discussion, Nellie, would you take a role in closing the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. Chair Quam?
Hi.
Commissioner Kneely?
Hi.
Commissioner Lavine?
Hi.
Commissioner Penn?
Hi.
And Commissioner Rosenberg?
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Hi.
Commissioner Sturza?
Hi.
All eyes on the motion passes.
Thank you. And next, I saw you taking some notes. Would staff try to answer the questions that came up during the public hearing?
Yeah. I also can add, if she has any more notes, I tried to write everything down as best I could. So, I just wanted to clarify that the ordinance amendment that you'd be voting on, that's included in the packet, does clarify to say regular sales, and the word continuous is being striked, stricken, striked. Also, just wanted to reiterate that the current home occupation rules don't allow gardening, so staff really does want to see this. So, we think that this would be a really important addition to the home occupation rules, because of, you know, thinking about the future and climate change, food access, and culturally relevant food access as well, because Richfield is... food access and culturally relevant food access as well, because Richfield is very culturally diverse. And we also wanted to make this an option for home occupations for small businesses who want to start growing as, as a way to make money on their own property. And then, let's see, what else do I have? I didn't look at Inver Grove Heights or St. Anthony. I am certainly curious. They just weren't part of our scopes. And then Minneapolis, I wanted to clarify the rules. We did speak to a couple planning staff at the city of Minneapolis. So they differentiate between home occupations and vacant residential properties. So as part of a home occupation, you can't sell produce, just like you can't sell other goods and services as part of a home occupation in Minneapolis. But in Minneapolis, you can have an urban farm on a vacant lot that is zoned for residential use. And you can sell from that urban farm on that vacant lot. It just can't be an accessory to current residential use. Yeah. And, and then I just want to say that we do, growing food and, and urban gardening as a home occupation would be a really good addition to the goals.
Anything else, Melissa?
I had a couple other items there. There were questions about the words continuous and regular. Those are terms that are defined in the dictionary. They're terms that are used frequently in other codes, which is why we have used them. In terms of this being directed at one particular family, that is not the case. We were asked to look at produce in particular, but we were also looking at all of the home occupation complaints that we get over a year. So a number of the changes that we've proposed have nothing to do with this particular operation. They have to do with the complaints that staff fields year round about home occupations and many other things. In terms of beekeeping, I just wanted to say we do allow beekeeping. It is the other exception to, or you are allowed to do beekeeping outside. You are not allowed to sell the honey from your property. It's considered retail sales and specifically prohibited, just like, and that's something that we compared this to when we were drafting the rules. We did talk to the sustainability coordinator about this. And we believe that the sustainability issue is addressed by allowing the growing of food for sale or donation on your property as a home occupation. The part that we were trying to regulate were those externalities that we tend to get complaints about traffic, those types of things, the clean and orderly. It's when somebody's, when somebody's got vegetables and they're rotting in their yard. That's the kind of thing we get complaints about. So we were trying to open this up to allow urban agriculture and regulate the things that tend to get complaints. The last thing that I will say is that, you know, this is, I've talked to the commission a number of times about the pyramid of discretion that you have in terms of actions that you make. This here is a legislative action. You are serving in a legislative capacity here, you and the city council. So you have the greatest amount of authority and discretion when you are making the rules, when you are setting a policy. So if you would like to consider opening things up either for CSAs or CSAs where the produce is grown on the land or for all retail, this is the place where you set that policy. And it's really about community standards. It's about what you want to allow and what the Richfield residents think is acceptable in the residential neighborhoods. What we're doing is giving you our recommendation based on the feedback that we get all the time. That, that doesn't mean you have to go with that recommendation. It's your community, and you have broad discretion here, unlike the last item where you're applying the rules and you have much less discretion. So we're happy to stand for questions.
Commissioner Sturza.
So, I guess this is more of a comment than a question. I would do that. Oh, I'm sorry, there's, can we mute? I am like, I agree. There was a comment in chat too, that like, that feedback is just really distracting. So I've lost my train of thought. But I wanted to say that I really appreciated the work that went into the staff report and the work session. I appreciated hearing the comments today from someone who's growing. I think that we all, or at least I shouldn't, I see the need for CSAs in our community. I see the need for us to have growers in our community. I, of course, I appreciate that the changes that are recommended by staff will permit that, permit the growing, and I also support the CSAs. So I would be supportive of the alternative recommendation of allowing CSAs in our community. That's where I'm coming from.
Commissioner Lavin and then Chair Quam.
I guess I would too. I would, I would support the alternative recommendation with the caveat that I, I think the big concern is that, you know, a CSA wouldn't grow too big or become something that it's not intended. So I would add the additional stipulation that, that the only thing that sold is food that's grown on site. So it doesn't become a distribution center for something that's bigger than what we're intending it to be. I think what's being proposed, and I think the idea of someone growing food and sharing it with neighbors at a scale that permits that. Residential lots in Richfield are not that big. So I, I don't know if we need to restrict the number of shares. For example, that could be involved in a CSA. But, you know, I certainly think that it needs to be contained to only things that are, that are produced on that lot. But with that said, I would support the, the addition or the carve out of a CSA versus, you know, the general ordinance. Thank you.
So Chair Quam, I heard in the public hearing a couple things that I had a question about. I heard reference to there being just one complaint. I'm guessing that this is citywide, that this just doesn't apply to the one property. We're talking about 36,000 residents that might partake in this. So you have had more than one complaint, I assume, or you wouldn't have gone to all this trouble to try to come up with a solution. Isn't that true? Nellie?
Chair Quam. That's correct. This, we base these changes on the home occupation complaints that we get year round. They are not just about people growing produce. They are about people, you know, running a car, car sales out of their home. It's about people running landscaping businesses out of their home. There are lots of different businesses that we get complaints about. And we had some other things in the hopper. And so when we were looking at the home occupation ordinance, we did that holistically. It was not specifically to, to target anybody.
Have you received more complaints than the one about a vegetable home occup? Yeah. Have you received more than one about fruits and vegetable growing? More than one complaint, if you just narrowed it down?
Since I have been here, we received one complaint about one garden. I'm not sure how many gardens are in Richfield or how many circles of complaints there have been.
Okay. And Melissa, do you know of any more?
Chair Quam, I'm not aware of any other complaints regarding produce sales. I'm aware of several complaints regarding rotting vegetation and things like that.
And then the other thing I wanted to just make a comment of, comment about is there was quite a bit of misinformation on social media that Richfield is trying to impose this on people and stop the growing. But that was the ordinance already, and just like all the cities that. Assistant Planner Jerome shared, there's a reason they, they limit them. I don't know what they are, but this is, we, we were, staff was trying to expand growing. And I wholeheartedly believe they, they and we support food growing and sustainability. So that implying otherwise, I, I just don't, I didn't appreciate that because I know how much staff cares about this and that we do too. It's managing competing desires that are very pure, which is, you know, living in your home peacefully versus just, there's always competing things that are all valuable that we try to weigh here. So thanks. Somebody else? Commissioner Penn?
Thank you, Chair Quam. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I think, first of all, I think we're rather fortunate as a, you know, first ring suburb to have to be actually grappling with this issue in the first place, that somebody would want to actually grow their lot to, in order to provide such a service as a CSA. And so I think altogether, you know, I, I, I support the activity. And I do, I do worry about the scale of it and how it could potentially be abused or get out of control, especially when it comes to just driving general traffic down a residential street that normally wouldn't have been there. But at the same time, I do ask myself for the short term, you know, if this were approved with the caveat that we would allow CSAs, one, you know, how many other CSAs are going to jump in immediately and, you know, abuse that privilege? And, or take advantage of that privilege in the first place in this city alone. And so I just, short term, I'm not too concerned about it being abused in such a way. And I think long term, I, I would, I do worry that this is kind of a nuanced issue. If we're going to allow one thing, we want to be really prescriptive about how we're going to allow this one thing. Although I, I do see how, you know, with the, with the timing of this, how it would make sense for us to at least act on this tonight with the caveat that we would be able to explore this as staff and as commissioners and councilmen later, or, you know, at the council later, that we would, that we would be able to enact a more, I guess, prescriptive rule as a, as a part of this. But right now, I think I would support the alternative recommendation to at least allow CSAs as part of this.
This is Chair Quam, then I'll pose that to staff. What, what, what are your thoughts about in general, starting it with allowing and then becoming more prescriptive? Does that seem like an option? If things aren't going, I am a little concerned too about the lack of precedent that even if Minneapolis doesn't even do it, and they're pretty, you know, they, they're a huge city, urban city. So that concerns me a bit, about not having much precedent for doing, selling property. I mean, vegetables off the property, but I, I love the, I love the idea of it. And I'm, so I'm not opposed to doing it, just trying to, like I said, balance other people's needs. Staff?
Chair Quam, it's difficult to put the horse back in the barn, so to speak. However, I think that we're talking about a couple of different things. There's been the original staff proposal, which is to allow the production on site and continue to require the distribution elsewhere, like other retail goods. There's been Commissioner Lavin's suggestion that you allow a CSA model if the produce is grown on the property for, as a home occupation. I think that's different than what Minneapolis is allowing with their market gardens and farm stands, which allow you to grow on an entire lot and set a stand out on your front yard and sell directly to walk up customers. I think that's something different. I don't, I haven't heard anyone specifically propose that. And then there's the other option, which is to allow the sale or allow the production of produce and allow all CSAs, not just CSAs that are producing directly in Richfield, but allow the CSA distribution like Minneapolis does, where a grower from outside the city can drop, drop off a number of shares at a local partner's house, and others come there to pick it up. Those are the options that I'm hearing. They're all very similar. And I, if you're, if, I don't think that you should open it entirely back up if you think that you might want to pull it back. My recommendation would be to gradually open. For instance, Commissioner Lavin's suggestion, and then moving, moving gradually to a broader, if that was the desire.
Commissioner Rudolph and then Commissioner Sturza.
You know, my question is, so if we limit it at, say, let's use a rough number 12. You know, I, I think we need to limit it at something because, you know, you know, I, I pick up CSA once a month right now through the winter time, you know, farm fresh eggs, things like that, you know. And I think of the line, it was 15 cars deep on Saturday. I, I can't imagine that being in my neighborhood, but on, on a weekly basis. But I'm not opposed to it. I think we've got to go through great lengths right now, especially during this, the pandemic, you know. But where do we limit it? I think we do need to limit it at some, at some point. I don't think we want to have a full blown retail locations on every block in this city. You know, we, you know, we've got to protect the residents as well in some, some form or fashion, you know, but also be open.
Commissioner Sturza?
I had a question or clarification on city staff. Commissioner Levine's recommendation or suggestion that we just permit CSAs grown on property, is that because that isn't one of the alternative recommendations? Does staff have any concern with that? Are there any? Is that problematic? Like, is that something that staff could support as an alternative recommendation? I just, because it's not an alternative recommendation, I was just curious to see what city staff had to say about that.
So the, the ordinance amendment that we prepared does not include that. So we would have to come back with a revised ordinance amendment. Oh, we would not have to come back. Melissa's.
Commissioner Sturza, the commission could offer an amendment to include Commissioner Levin's suggestion. And I would say from a staff perspective, that it's a good suggestion. I think it kind of splits the middle between, you know, what staff has suggested on the one hand, and then completely open it up, opening it up. I think it's a way to limit it without the enforcement issue, perhaps, that we were worried about when you say it's 12 cars, it's 15 cars. The issue there being that staff, it does not count cars. We don't have, we can't, that's very difficult to enforce. It's much easier to enforce that you have to grow the produce on your property.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's like it's time, I think. I'm going to, I'm going to give them another pause. Anyone else? Okay, so it's time for someone to make a motion, and, you know, we can make a motion however we like. Melissa?
And I will just remind everyone here, because it does sound like perhaps there will be an amendment. The way that we handle this is someone moves the main motion, the original motion. So there should be a motion and second on that first one. That doesn't mean that you have to vote for it. It just continues the discussion, gets the discussion going. Once there's been a motion and second on the original motion, someone can move an amendment. You would then motion and second the amendment, vote on the amendment, and then vote on the package, either including the amendment or not. Hopefully that makes sense. But the first step is to motion the main motion.
Commissioner Sturza?
Can I make a motion to recommend approval of an ordinance amendment to modify rules related to home occupation?
Is that, I need, I think I need to be more specific. Modifying, oh, pardon me? Melissa, what did you say?
I said, I think it's okay.
Okay, could you repeat it, Commissioner Sturza, because then I didn't follow.
Okay, so I'm making a motion so that we can entertain conversation about recommendation of an ordinance amending the Richfield zoning code regulations relating to home occupation rules.
Okay. Second?
Commissioner Penn, second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Lavin? You're muted.
Sorry, do I mod, do I put a modifier in that now? Sorry, do I mod, do I put a modifier in that now? Do we?
Now you would move, if you would like, now you would move to amend the motion to include whatever it is you're going to include.
I would like to move to amend Commissioner Sturza's motion to include allowing CSA community support in agriculture, drop off, pickup at residential sites with the caveat of the sales are only allowed to be related to that product that's grown on site.
Is there a second?
I said, second, but.
Any discussion on the amendment or the motion?
So now you'll want to, just to clarify, you'll want to vote on the amendment first and then you will come back to the motion.
And before that, I'm going to ask if we have any other additional amendments to the motion. No? Okay. So now we vote on the amendment first? Okay, thank you. Any, any more discussion? Okay, so Nellie, would you take role on the Commissioner Lavine's amendment about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Chair Kwam.
Aye.
Commissioner Kneely.
Aye.
Commissioner Lavine.
Aye.
Commissioner Penn.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sturza.
Aye.
All ayes, the motion passes.
Thank you. Now we will, any further discussion on the original motion? Otherwise we'll take a vote. Okay, Nellie, would you take a roll call on the, on the first motion?
So now, just to be clear, you are voted on, you are voting on the motion as amended.
Okay, thank you. So the, yeah, and everybody understands what that is? Or raise your hand if you don't? Okay. Okay, I don't think there's any discussion. So Nellie, would you take role on that, the amended motion?
Yes. Chair Kwam.
Aye.
Commissioner Kneely.
Aye.
Commissioner Lavine.
Aye.
Commissioner Penn.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza.
Aye.
All ayes and the motion as amended passes.
Thank you, everyone. Two big public hearings tonight. All right, so we're going to move on to liaison reports. So first, we have Commissioner Rudolph with Community Services Advisory Commission. Do you have a report?
No report today.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosenberg, any report for city council?
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Sturza, any report for Housing and Redevelopment Authority or HRA?
Just a quick update that a new commissioner, a new person was appointed to the HRA. After Pat Elliott stepped down, the council appointed Lee Onasorge to the HRA. He's been involved in ARDA, a disability advocacy group here in Richfield. So excited to see that voice on the HRA.
Thank you for your report. Next, Commissioner Lavine, anything from Richfield School Board?
No report at this time. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Commissioner Kneely, anything from the Transportation Commission?
Yes, forgive me if I'm not doing this quite right just yet as a new person. I wasn't able to attend the meeting and they haven't uploaded video in minutes, but I checked the agenda. And, and it sounds like they had some very interesting discussions around multiple projects. They also introduced new commissioners and elected new chairs and vice chairs.
Thank you. You did that perfectly. It's your report, so whatever you think, we should hear. And lastly, Commissioner Penn, anything from the Sustainability Commission?
Yes and no, I guess. It sounds like they, they keep waiting on an update on the community trash collection. And so far, nothing is public yet, although they did say that it has been positive and the partners have been positive, so I'll leave it at that. And then also there's, there's work on the upcoming agenda to, to talk about the tree replacement preservation plan. That's kind of in the works at the moment, but I'm worried that probably next month.
Thank you so much. So that's the end of our reports. Now could we have the city planners' reports, please?
I'm going to keep it short because it's late and just remind you that there is a work session tomorrow night when we'll talk a little bit about aligning some of our zoning districts with our comprehensive plan. And then also not listed on your agenda, we will be, actually, this will just be city council. The city council of Richfield will meet with the city council of Bloomington in early April to talk about the results of the still ongoing CNU project. The public input for that will close this week. And CNU, if you don't remember, is doing the project at Portland and along 494 at Portland Avenue where they're going to mend that, will be reconstructing that bridge. So I would expect that report to be drafted by the end of April, early May. So we'll see what that, what that consultant has to say about that area and how we can make that more walkable, bikeable and livable for the folks that live there. That's it.
Quick question on the work session tomorrow. Was there a packet that was distributed or is it just show up and learn?
There is, and we will make sure that you get that.
This is Chair Kwam. Aren't there other, could you tell us our other meetings coming up? Staff?
Yep, there's the meeting tomorrow. Then your next regular meeting is April 26th and a joint work session on April 27th that I can't remember what that's for right now.
Thank you. That's good enough.
That's a long ways away. I'll remember by next time.
All right, so that's the end of the city planner's report, correct?
Correct.
All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Penn, second.
Did you get those, Nellie?
Sorry, who made the motion?
Commissioner Sturza.
Okay, thank you. Got it.
All right, any discussion? Can we just say all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay. I mean.
Oh, goodness.
That was an aye.
Uh-oh. Okay, so then I think the motion is seven to zero.
I'll strike those from the minutes.
All right, thanks, everybody who participated tonight. Have a good night.